My clock just turned over. So I see that we have a quorum of the city council present in the room. So I'm going to call this meeting to order of the city council, city of Hillsborough. First item up on today's agenda is our consent agenda as always. Under that, we have vouchers totaling ninety-eight thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars forty cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding them?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, page six. Are we, are we working on raising funds for pickleball courts? There was a twenty-seven hundred dollar. Something for pickleball court.
Yes, that was the community foundation, Matt, do you recall? Do you want to explain that or?
Cause there's a fundraising thing going on, isn't there?
There was. My wife donated to it, so I know there's one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, it was at the. Is that the amount? Hold on, let me get to it.
Two thousand seven forty.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Two thousand seven fourteen, community foundation. Yes, so we did, uh, we made it. Was that the matching donation that we had gotten through from?
Right, we have a Hillsborough community, um, developed, community development fund at Hillsborough Community Foundation. And there's a distribution that we get every year out of that. So we went ahead and took that distribution, so we had two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars coming in. We turned around and wrote that back to put it into the rec.
The rec.
The rec.
Fund.
Fund at the Hillsborough Community Foundation.
Okay.
That was a matching.
For.
For the pickleball.
Okay. Got it. I just didn't see the other side of it, I guess.
That's what my wife said. Pay in, they don't match, it's going there.
Yeah, there was a match, match campaign through October, um, I don't remember how much it was, twenty thousand dollars or something like that.
The rec did twenty thousand for the pickleball.
Did twenty thousand and then there was, yeah, matching campaign, I think they got it too. Pretty sure they got to it, so.
It's awesome.
Yeah, um. David Edgar would know better on the final result of that, so yes.
Is there more information you'd like to have?
Nope, uh, that's, that's a great explanation, thank you.
Anytime.
Yep.
Okay, next up, we have minutes from our October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Next, we have a couple CDBGs. One is change order number seven for one twenty-six North Main. And the second is pay application number four for one twenty-six North Main. Anything we need to know there, Matt?
Uh, no, there's just some additional work, a- as with anything, when you start getting into these projects, there's additional work, especially with this one, because of the historical nature of some of these things. So the change orders for an additional nineteen thousand, uh, and just miscellaneous projects, you got the list there on there. Uh, and then the construction payout is just a normal payout for them on that, and I think they'll, I don't think they're drawing any CDBG funds on this one. Um. Or I guess they are. On this one, but. Is that correct? Am I looking at that right?
The app is four is for ninety-five, ninety-four thousand.
Ninety-four thousand, so.
Okay.
Be drawn.
Were there any questions regarding those two items? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is our first opportunity for public comment. Do we have anybody online, Mr. Styles from the public?
Do, uh, a couple people whom I do not recognize, so they're gonna be.
Vote.
I'm, I'm not gonna. I will admit them, but the, everything's turned off, so they shouldn't be able to do anything.
Okay.
Uh, but no one, no one has raised their hand to indicate they want to speak on.
Wait a minute.
Yep.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, I will close the first opportunity for public comment. And we will move into first public hearing for four oh one South Ash regarding the notice of violations. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to be heard on this matter?
Seen anybody raise a hand, so.
Okay. Going once. Going twice. Okay, we're moving on. Now we are in consideration. Do I need to close the hearing?
Not necessarily, but if you want to hear from chief on it, on any of that, he, I know has some information.
Okay.
For your consider.
All right. Chief?
Yeah, I have a, the file that I put together that the homeowner has been notified initially. And this was in July of the, of the violations and they're listed out. And then there was nothing, no action, so then I reported my, uh, reported conditions to this council, along with some photographs of the conditions. And then I have here the, um, resolution. Along with the return. The resolution was never received by the owner. And then the affidavit of publication. And then I have photographs from today. That indicate very, there's, some things have been moved around, but there's no change.
Let's see that.
Yeah, I've got them up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Matt has them also.
What up? I keep wanting to go full screen on me.
And when chief says that the first resolution you passed was not received by the homeowner, that he was sent by certified mail and it was rejected.
Right.
They rejected it.
Yeah, rejected it.
Right.
And I got homeowner did or?
There's, there's the receipt that he would sign if he would accept it. And it was returned to us on October twenty-seventh. So they, they made several attempts, uh, to deliver it and it was never, it was rejected each time.
Okay. Any questions for Ben? All right, hearing none, we have a resolution. Number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Which is authorizing the abatement of four oh one South Ash, Mr. Styles?
Well, glad we had somebody raising their hand, but they have since not, or have putting it down, so. Um. Think we're good to go here, I've got the pictures right here. You can see these, these are the pictures that Ben referenced. So I walk, this is from today. Yeah, well, that. What's that for?
That's the dead tree I was talking about, and the dilapidated fence, and that's why it's got another dilapidated fence.
That.
Okay. Again, I want to make sure that we don't have somebody online that wants to be heard, so. Let's take another look at that, if you don't mind. If you can pull it back up.
Yeah, I've got it still open here. We don't have anybody, I'm not showing anybody raising a hand.
I'm sorry, I cannot read those names.
Oh, uh, yeah, it's Yen, and then we have somebody named James Harrison.
Okay. Nobody named James Harrison is associated with this property?
That's my knowledge.
Okay. Very good. All right. Mr. Styles, you want to talk to us about the, uh?
Yeah, your resolution here is, uh, it will just authorize us after, let's see here, make sure I got her, right, December fourth, honor before December fourth, so there's still thirty days. Uh, for them to act, uh, to commence work with this resolution, but after that, that December fourth deadline, uh, once it's published and since the the owner, that property can be repaired or, um, demolished, removed, whatever the case may be, uh, and the cost of that can be associated, uh, with the, with the property itself, so, um. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, this is just an abatement ordinance that would authorize us to make that abatement.
So in this situation, uh, Ben, chief, would, we probably wouldn't be looking at demolishing the structure, would we?
Yeah, the, the structure isn't deemed dangerous, um, it's just, it's dilapidated. And there's, you know, overgrowth, there's junk and debris, the, the fence and the dead tree probably all need to be removed.
Okay. Well, that should help mitigate the cost of the, of the, uh, of, of the resolution.
And would we contract this out and use our own people to clear it?
We would probably contract it out, depending on the level of the work.
Good.
Once we got a better look at it, I mean, and there's still thirty days, so they may, may yet respond to that and do something, but, uh, we would probably contract it out, depending on the work that needs to be done there, I would say.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Have, am I allowed to ask if we've had to do similar abatements before for this property? Or is this?
Not in this group.
Okay.
And yes, you are allowed, Dan.
But you had to raise your hand.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept it, a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, authorizing the abatement of four oh one South Ash.
I might have motioned.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds, is there any further discussion? Uh, we'll go ahead and poll the council on this, councilman Bai.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign, and we will again note, attempt to notify the property owner and give them their requisite time to, uh, to do the abatement and, uh, absent that, we will step in. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have another public hearing, and this one is for three ten North Washington regarding the notice of violations. Is there anyone that would care to be heard in this matter?
You have someone joining. I have nobody raising their hand to, to be known.
Tom Jones.
A Tom Jones has joined.
Suspicious.
It seems, seems suspiciously generic.
Well, is there anyone by the name of Tom Jones associated with this property?
Yeah, we've got a bunch of people trying to get in too, so I'm guessing this is.
Our lovely friends, the Zoom bombers.
Zoom bombers.
Yep. Gotta love them, not.
That be Tom Jones or is it?
Uh, yeah. Can you hum a few bars?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody in the, in the room care to be heard on this matter? If not, we will close the public hearing, actually, before we close the public hearing, we'll let chief Stecky report on this property.
Ben, um, they'll have the file here, this, uh, little kerfuffle happened when we, we originally sent this out in, uh, in May, and this is the receipt from that, when we sent that out, and it was lost. Post office lost it, so then we, I took the same document and sent it again, and then it was signed for and received by the owner. Nothing happened, um, and so then I made my reported conditions to the council, along with photographs. So it's just a.
Photograph.
Of course. And then the resolution by the council, and it was received also. By the owner. And the affidavit of publication. And then the photographs from today. Yeah, it's, and, and we did remove the tree, because you can see that how hollow it is, and it was leaning over the neighbor's house. So I deemed it to be dangerous, so we, we went ahead and, and did an emergency removal of the tree with our crews. And that's what the backlash.
Oh, rope is going, but.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's.
Door is open.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's laying on the ground, it's even conformed to the steps it's been laying there.
Wow, nice.
Okay.
Okay.
My guess is, in this case, the structure will need to be demolished.
Yes.
Is there a basement underneath it?
Don't believe so.
Well, that will help mitigate some of the costs as well, not having to deal with that.
Now, this is, I, I feel I need to remind the council, there was a, uh, the neighbor came in and spoke to the council few months ago, I think, about this property, I don't know what the content of that conversation was, but this is that property.
Um, I think, you know, it, it's the, the, the underlying situation is still there, and if the person that came and spoke to the council is interested, um.
You may have.
You know, they should be in contact with the owner of the property, I would think.
As they would like to purchase. With the owner's contact.
Hey, so we've done our part in that regard. But the cost of this, should, uh, should a, a sale take place, will transfer with the deed to the property? I believe, I mean, they will not be able to avoid the cost of our mitigation by selling the property.
Correct.
I guess, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Styles?
No. Everybody that has joined mysteriously has vanished.
They need to hear from Tom, though.
Well, sorry. Sorry to, sorry to be the buzzkill on that one.
Yeah, well, I can't, I know there's a Tom Jones song I should, uh, have on the top of my head, but it's just not there, there you go. It's not unusual from to vanish.
Lots new.
It's not unusual.
Oh, all right. Well, let's move along, we've got, uh, we've got business to attend to, and, uh, so now we will close the public hearing. And we will address resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, authorizing the abatement of three ten North Washington. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Okay.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second by councilman Bai? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, councilman Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Sure.
Councilman Bai.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen is hereby adopted, mayor will sign. And now we get to ask you to come up to the podium, chief, and, uh, deliver your annual department head report, please.
Okay.
Okay, let me swap these out.
Matt's gonna help me with that.
Get me in the driver's seat.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to showcase some of the things that I do for the city of Hillsborough. And understand that there is a lot more, um, but since my presentation is a slideshow, this is what I have pictures of. That's what we're gonna go with. Um, uh, first I'll briefly touch on some more code issues. Um, pictured here is some, some of the paperwork that you're familiar with now, having seen the, the file. These are four other open cases that I'm working right now, but, uh, these, they're showing progress. For example. Am I going the right way?
Join together here.
There we go. For example, uh, this, this homeowner.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to use the laser pointer on it.
I'm not trying that, I'm trying to.
Oh.
Okay, there we go. All right, this homeowner had replaced a non-compliant chimney with a compliant chimney, which I had identified this as the most urgent issue on his lot. There's more to do, but this shows progress, I mean, he actually spent some money. And, and put this, uh, new chimney in.
If I may really quick, how did you know that it was a non-compliant chimney?
It was made out of several different parts and pieces, he had kind of copped it together with, uh, with things he found lying around. And, uh, I mean, he's actually a pretty clever guy, and it really wa, it was working, but it was dangerous. You know, there, there was too much of it that was non-compliant, and this is all, I checked every bit of it, all those components are UL listed, uh, they're installed properly. You know, like I said, there, there's more to do on this particular lot, but, you know, again, he's, he's showing progress, he's showing compliance.
Might have to point at it, I don't know how strong it is. Okay. Well. I can do it.
Okay, so my position with the city includes fire chief, building inspector, and code enforcement officer. Each of these positions' job descriptions has as a marginal function, performs other duties as deemed necessary or assigned. I'd like to start my report with some of those. As a licensed master plumber, when plumbing problems arise, it is deemed necessary for me to spring into action. Pictured here is some of my beautiful plumbing work in the mechanical room with a splash pad blown out when the heat was mistakenly turned off and the water in the pipes froze. I'll just ask you to.
All right, sorry.
No, it's, it's all good.
Not sure what's going on.
Um, some of the toilets didn't survive either, we'll advance to the next one. Now, it's as though it never happened. Uh, pictured here also are three backflow prevention devices that, as a certified backflow device tester, I perform the required annual tests and maintenance on all nine of the city's devices. Not pictured is the extensive plumbing work at the scout house when the heat stopped working and those pipes froze. Other plumbing work includes the Schaeffler House, the sports complex, at the cart shed, and the concession stand, and the men's room. Uh, here at city hall, at the electric department, and at the pool, where at the pool, I also orchestrated the foundation repair work. Um, other duties, uh, include, uh, safety committee member and supervising confined space entry. All these fall under other duties as deemed necessary or assigned. So, uh, my position as building inspector and fire chief merge, uh, for a particular event sometimes, pictured here is a trench incinerator. Uh, this is out at Orchard Ridge, there were approximately forty trees on the site of the, of phase one of the Orchard Ridge project. The super asked me if he could employ this device to burn all the trees that were to be, be removed, I said no. There's, uh, only limited open burning allowed in the city limits. So he requested that I do some research about the device, uh, because he had already encountered several municipalities with the same rule. That finally did allow it. Long story short, I did allow it under the direct supervision of the fire department.
Did you use the drone to take that picture?
Some of these, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, throughout the day, this monster traco fed huge amounts of trees into the pit, while the incinerator blasted high velocity air across the top of the pile. It was an impressive operation. Except for the first forty minutes, there was almost no smoke. By the end of the, oh, yeah, that's, that was, I should have moved that slide, there's almost no smoke, so here we go, at the end of the day, there was nothing but a few glowing embers.
Wow.
So now we're gonna start now my building inspector's portion of my report. Uh, here is an incredibly ambitious and well-planned project. During the past eight years, there has been a drought in residential construction in Hillsborough. That has now ended. I believe that Matt Styles was instrumental in bringing midnight housing to the table and helping to close the deal on the Orchard Ridge project. Work is progressing rapidly and moving deliberately in a clockwise rotation, starting with the office, so that it will become the construction headquarters. Keep in mind too, these pictures are about two weeks old, you should go look at it now, they are moving. So, yeah, um, all the subcontractors are aware of my inspection requirements and do their best to give me a day's advance, uh, when they need an inspection. But sometimes they forget and ask for one ASAP. I do my best to respond promptly to each request so as not to slow the progress. Since the project started, I've been there almost every day, sometimes as many as four times. The day of this picture, there were three footing inspections and one bond beam inspection. Here's some statistics, since the beginning of the year, I have issued a hundred and three building permits. The collective amount of the estimated cost of construction indicated on those permits is an impressive eleven million, two hundred thousand, nine hundred dollars. And I, I want to point out, that does not include Caber's project, that I will probably be issuing the permit for that this year yet. Uh, permit fees collected are more than thirty-four thousand, four hundred dollars, and I've performed over a hundred and forty-four inspections. And with the help of Karen Funk, we have issued seventy-eight contractor licenses.
Wow.
Uh, yet another large residential project is the Villas on Ash Street. Local developer Daryl Driggers is building high-quality duplexes, uh, for sale. Another large-scale project going on right now is the elementary school storm shelter. I can assure you that this building will provide a safe place during a tornado. It's designed and being built to ICC five hundred standard. Very robust. Again, the contractors and superintendent know what I expect and are very cooperative and professional. Other tasks that I do that are associated with the building inspector's position are plan reviews, continuing education to maintain my certifications, and conducting yearly plumbing and mechanical continuing education classes for contractors. Now we're entering the fire department portion of my report. Pictured here is some countywide wildland training put on by Lester Kaiser, the Lincolnville Fire Chief, who, in his retirement, responds to, um, national large-scale fires that take place mostly out west. He's often deployed for months at a time, but when he's here, he likes to share techniques that he has used on those major fire. What's happening here is we're deploying a lot of single-jacket wildland hose from a single apparatus with branches going into a field to create a large wet line to slow the progress of a grass fire. And here's a picture of Lester pointing north. Pictured here is the new, more modern and larger capacity command truck.
Beast.
Thank you all for going the extra mile in providing the fire department with another new apparatus. Sometimes we can combine training with the cherished public service, here we provide a fun water-cooled experience for the Head Start program. Another public service we provide is paying an annual tribute to our fallen brothers and sisters every nine eleven. With public information always in the foreground of our activities, Fire Prevention Week gives us a great opportunity to educate kiddos about fire safety. Here firefighters Jesse Dirks and Billy Hendricks show the preschool children what firefighters look and sound like when in full gear, in hopes that they won't be afraid and hide from them. Here we see Harrison traversing the gauntlet of firefighters, electric department crews, and fire pup. This was part of the day of teaching each elementary school student how to call nine one one, how firefighters put on, and details about their gear, and how to get out if there's a fire in the house. Other events that we do include the Arts and Crafts Fair, where we combine team building with a fundraiser and emergency prepared, preparedness and response. And then there's the demo derbies, big truck night, high school pep rally, slipper slides for various events, and fire extinguisher training for various local businesses, employees, and city of Hillsborough employees. Pictured here, we took the boats out on Ameri County Lake to practice maneuvers, step one, safely launch the boats. Captain Matt Hine was in command of boat one. Even though I was on board, firefighter Connor Hebert was in command of boat two. After performing the exercises on the lake for about a. After performing the exercises on the lake for about an hour, it was time to head back to Hillborough. And since I was already wet from being the victim, I helped guide our boat in. Captain Corey Unruh, our training officer, led our air pack and RIT training at one of our regular training drills. Here firefighter Billy Hendricks demonstrates the proper way to train with an air pack, military style. Firefighter Jesse Dirks practices a ro- rapid bottle change out. And we finished up with firefighters going for a walk with full gear and breathing from their airbags. Uh this is a regular drill that I was unable to attend, so Assistant Chief Todd Helmer stepped up to assist Captain Corey Unruh with this complex and important training. There's even a particular technique for getting the hose off the truck. Corey looks on as these firefighters get ready to go inside. This house was donated to the fire department for training. Our plan was to later use it for live fire training, but that didn't work out. Team's ready to go. Now they're making entry. Once in the hot zone, the interior team relies on the warm-zone team to manage the hose and or whatever support they may need. Here's another team getting ready to go in. Sometimes it's good to work the warm zone. Or the cool zone. Hot-zone work is hard. We always train our firefighters to clear the nozzle prior to entering the structure. Here we see Todd Helmer making sure that the hot-zone work is being done safely and correctly. This year Hillsborough has responded to eleven structure fires. The work's not done until everything is put back correctly. These are all training pictures. We don't, I don't allow pictures of incidents. For liability reasons, sure. So drafting is what we call it when we draw water from a static source like a pond or a drop tank. Here we see Captain Matt Hine teaching some of the firefighters how to set up our floating pump. So the main goal is to draft into the engine using the large diameter hard suction hose. While the floating pump is primarily used to fill brush trucks from ponds during wildland fires or rural structure fires, it becomes a redundant safeguard. And here we see captains Matt Hine and Corey Unruh going over the process. And the chief has to put in his two cents. Getting all the pieces of the main uh suction hose put together correctly is important, so we don't lose prime. Teamwork makes you go much quicker. Understanding the pump panel is paramount. Here firefighter Bill Bradford shares his experience with firefighters Monte Etheridge and Nathan Lopez. Shown here in the background with the ball cap and the beard is Rusty Walter. His firefighting days are over, but he's a wealth of experience and he does all of our reporting to the state, which is going through a major change, and Rusty is right out in front of it. Uh behind Matt Hine is Lieutenant Marty Raider. His twenty-five years of experience on the Hillsborough Fire Department shows he's always helpful and willing to share his knowledge. This year Hillsborough Fire has responded to over ninety-three runs, including sixteen wildland and five vehicle fires. Captain Matt Hine organized this training event, which included our department, Marion County EMS, and the Hillsborough lifeguards. Lifeguards practice their rescue techniques under the watchful eyes of the Hillsborough Fire Department and their CPR techniques. And they did a great job. Which apparatus in our fleet to make it pump water? It was dark. It was dark and outside, so these pictures aren't great, but the training was. Turns out, there were only a few of us that could complete the task on all trucks the first time. They can all do it now. This year Hillsborough Fire has responded to twelve motor vehicle accidents and twenty-seven alarm calls. This training is uh, this water shuttle training is critical for uh rural structure and similar large-scale fires where stationary pumper is needed and there are no hydrants to supply the required water. Shown here is our two-thousand-gallon tender, formerly referred to as a tanker, uh used primarily for hauling water. This is the fill site, and in this case, the fill site is not far from the dump site, but the steps are the same regardless. Here I placed firefighter Jesse Jesse Dirks in charge of the fill site. He looks on as firefighter Trent Jones clears the height. Shown here is our heavy brush truck with its fifteen-hundred-gallon capacity. It can also be used to haul water, though its primary function is wildland firefighting. Then the water is dumped into the drop tank across the parking lot. Then our pumper uh discharges draws the water out from the drop tank and discharges it through the deck gun for this exercise. This training incorporates much of the same skills and objectives as the drafting train, adding hauling the water. So far this year, Hillsborough Fire has responded to twenty-one EMS and first responder calls and nine other calls. In July, we were invited to participate in a regional water rescue training event in Harrington. We introduced our method of using a mega mover as means of getting a victim safely onboard and inflatable. Amazed at the ease and low cost of this method, others adopted it as well. Kinda hard to see, but here we're using a throw bag to extend a rope to a conscious victim to draw them into the boat. Harrington Fire uh has a pontoon boat, which offers some benefits, but makes getting a victim onboard challenging. Here it took four rescuers in the boat and one in the water to get the victim onboard. However, once onboard, there's a stable platform for CPR and other emergency first aid procedure. There was even a rescue dog involved. This year, we were able to send seven firefighters to SCAFA Fire Training Conference. Billy Hendricks, Nathan and Brendan Schaefer, Nathan Lopez, Austin Welsh, Connor Hebert, and Monte Etheridge. Some of the classes they took were tactical thermal imaging, scene size-up, strategy and tactics, and wildland urban interface. Also, Billy Hendricks, Nathan Schaefer, and Monte Etheridge completed their firefighter one training, which is a national standard. This firefighter one class started on April fourth and finished on August sixteen. It was held two nights a week and a couple of Saturdays. I think this represents an astonishing commitment from these individuals. Any questions?
Oh, what was that certification that you just mentioned?
Firefighter one. That's a national certification that you are qualified to get an entry-level job as a firefighter anywhere in the country. You know, different stations are gonna have different requirements also. The firefighter one is that baseline.
Okay, and do um all of our uh firefighters have that?
Not all.
Okay.
It's not a requirement.
Okay. I was gonna move back to your uh building code portion, that's okay?
Yeah, of course.
I'm trying to figure out what a phrase is. How compliant would you say are the contractors here in regards to keeping you in the loop and, you know, having you out on the site uh to have inspections done?
It varies.
Okay.
It varies. Um that's why these, I pointed out these two projects, they're very compliant. Yeah, they they they, I get a text message from them and almost always it says, hey, we're gonna be doing this this tomorrow around nine o'clock, so if you could come and check it, you know, either the day before or, you know, a little earlier, you know. And there was one that texted me or called me today and said, hey, can you come and inspect these sewer lines at four o'clock? And I said, no. But uh that, this is an individual that I'm very familiar with their work. They're always compliant, they're very high-quality work, so I said, send me the pictures. And then I can look at the pictures and then I I've got it documented that it's done right. But uh there are others that aren't as compliant. And and sometimes, you know, really my what I tell contractors is my inspection schedule is this. Before it's covered up, I wanna see it, regardless of what it is. If it's below concrete, if it's below dirt, sheet rock, shingles, if it's below, if it's getting covered up, I wanna see it before it gets covered up. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ben? I think especially uh, well, there's two parts uh to to gonna be to my comment. The first part is and then, and Ben, you can you can uh agree or disagree, but I'm gonna venture to say that the first part, the code enforcement part, is generally the most stressful part for you in terms of your dealing with with, cause it, cause it, it's it's a it's a tou- it's a it's a tough situation. You're trying to uphold the building codes that they that they uh, and we're trying to clean up the community. And it's just, you're not meeting people, you know, at their best or in in many cases, so I wanna commend you for that part, you know, being willing to step up to that part. And if anybody can't see why we don't need this new fire station after watching that presentation and seeing all the apparatus and all the firefighters that we have, and then the places that we've crammed them into right now, you know, it just to me, kinda beggars belief, so, you know, I I uh, you know, we are going to figure this out. We are gonna get this done, and I am sorry that it's taking the time that it is. But, you know, it's 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 uh, sometimes it's two steps forward and one step back.
Completely understood, and the fire department understands as well. We appreciate the efforts and the commitment.
We are committed and uh, you know, it, we will get it done. We will get it done, so thank you very much, Ben, and uh I appreciate all your work.
Uh, oh, Ben, sorry, really quickly, do we, are we still at pretty uh max capacity for volunteers as well?
Yeah, in fact, I've turned away two good prospects, because I don't have none. Are you interested?
Asking a lot of questions about like what.
Yeah, I know.
You know, we kinda know where he was going, you you Alright, okay, very good.
Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have an executive session for personnel-related matters, and I'll read the motion. I move the city council recessor to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one for a period of fifteen minutes. The meeting will include the city administrator, fire chief, and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume at four fifty-eight. Does somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make the most.
Okay, and we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. We'll let Jane get in.
I'm gonna pay you forward again. They sure get a lot of money for us.
We are now back in open session. Let the records show that there was no action taken during the executive session. Next item up is our business item section. Under that, we have Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventeen cents. Any comment there, Mr.?
Uh, it's just a brush truck uh from the fire department, so pretty normal kinda thing, coolant leak, water pump. Finding a little bit of just maintenance.
Any questions?
Um, is that coolant leak gonna be a major issue that we'll have? Or is this like, it's completely fixed now, or is it, you know, gonna be of a current thing that'll?
I think it'll, this appears to have corrected the issue. We gotta put more, it'll be alright, I think, from here on.
I mean, this is our newest apparatus. It's our newest piece of equipment, other than Ben's beast pickup.
Well, now, this is the ninety-six.
Oh, word, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
I thought the brush truck was the uh brush truck.
Well, we've got a couple brush trucks.
Okay, well, there you go.
Sorry, yeah, no, no, it's not the, not the, we'll drive one that we
Okay.
Recently purchased.
Alright. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would uh accept a motion to authorize payment of the Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventeen cents.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Jorgensen moves. Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, all those abstaining.
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Next up, city administrators report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. I just wanna give you a couple updates on some things. ICMA presentation was done at the ICMA conference last week. It was um it was a a a good uh, good time. I learned a lot. Uh got to give a presentation on entrepreneurship and rural Kansas.
Sorry about that.
Led Zeppelin cranking.
A lot of love, baby.
Um, so the the presentation I gave was leveraging entrepreneurship for rural economics or rural Kansas economic development success. I thought I, I thought it went pretty well. I was a little worried when I started because it was only me and the guy that was introducing me. It was eight o'clock on the last day, which is like the worst speaking spot you can find, but uh by the time it got done, we had about forty people, so it was really good. And I got to talk to several folks at the end. Uh, I really appreciate the opportunity to promote the city. Uh, it's a national event. I wanna thank you guys for giving me the support to to go and do that. Uh, it's always fun to talk to other people about how cool this stuff is we get to do in Hillsborough and um, I think we got a really good rate of town and and people have been pretty pretty good, uh pretty receptive to hearing that, so. Uh, rate reviews and budget amendment, I'm working on, working my way through that. Um, and so we'll have those for you at the next meeting. Budget amendment will be, the goal will be to have that hearing on the uh Monday, the fifteenth of December, so. Uh, Lincoln and Wilson, this is a continuing frustration for me. Uh, this project, Vos Parag originally, they talked about coming in the last week of um October to to stage and then that next, that first week, this week, actually, they would've been here working. Uh, and then it got pushed out to November seventeenth, and I told Darren, like, we're just not, we're not doing that because it's gonna be tore up during Thanksgiving, and then it gets drawn out, and next thing you know, it's the middle of winter and the thing is still not finished, and so I pulled the plug on them for coming in in November, because I think it's just too risky uh from a weather perspective. Uh, especially with Wilson Street, there's just no access on the west side or the east side of that street. People aren't gonna have it, so I didn't want that to happen in the in the um winter, and so we're pushing that off and they're gonna start. I told them they had to pick a date that's April first or later, uh which will give us some more flexibility. Uh, but it's extremely frustrating to me and I, you know, I wasn't have not been super impressed with DBH or or Vos Parag on that one, so uh they continue to be challenging. So hopefully we can get that project finished, and then we'll get, move on to Lincoln. They'll be able to do Lincoln right after that then. Um, and so that'll get finished up in the summer.
Do they have the ability to increase costs if it's moved into the future like that? No.
No, they're locked in on the cost part, but um it's just the frustration of the time. It's been two years.
Pretty good about doing stuff.
Well, and they do good work. I mean, they've done great work, worse on Adam Street, um and all the other projects, and I've worked with them in the past, and they do good work. It's just this, for whatever reason, we're having a heck of a time with scheduling, getting things done, a time-efficient man or so. I don't know what it is, but um, that that's a situation with those two. I wish it was better. I wish we were having a different conversation about how they're finishing up uh before Thanksgiving, but that's just not gonna be the case, so. Uh, library, just to give an update on that, we did a reinspection on the thirty-first. Um the board actually chose to close the facility on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Uh, we determined that they had made sufficient progress at that time, so they could reopen. Uh, so they were open on uh Halloween, and the day after, they actually had an author event, so um, there's still some work that needs to be done, but I'm I'm confident that they'll get it done. They had it clean enough that we felt like they could, they could operate and and with the, with the promise that they're gonna do more. Uh, and so um another thing, the library board met on the thirtieth, and they discussed staffing and decided to make a change to the director's position, so they've appointed Melinda Just as the interim director. She's succeeding Jeannie Bartle. Um, and Jeannie had already had decided that she was going to leave the library a little later, but they've decided to make that move. Um, and so I think now they're searching for a permanent full-time or or permanent director, um not full-time necessarily, but so there should be more on that coming weeks. Uh, the fairgrounds, man, this one. So there should be more on that coming weeks. Uh, the fairgrounds, man, this one was frustrating too. So the fair board hosted a demolition derby on the twenty-fifth of October. Uh, there's a lot of rain building up to that event, and so. It caused a significant amount of damage. I happen to have some pictures, um, of that, and so. It was very frustrating because they never even told us that it was happening, um, so they didn't, you know, dot their i's and cross their t's. For the safety side of it either, uh, pull these pictures up, so you can kind of see what we're dealing with. Okay, come here. I've got a few here.
Oh, jeez.
So, yeah, this is the aftermath. You can kind of see where the rodeo arena is. This is where we park people, so they really tore that sucker up, um.
This is before any work to try to, to try to mend it happened, right? This is right after the event.
Yeah, no, this was.
This is outside the arena. This is. No, this is a road, sports complex road.
That's sports complex.
This is the area we, we're talking about, the dog park going into.
Yeah, that fenced area. This is the other side of the street where they kind of torn that up. Uh, this is in, no, this is still outside the arena here. Yeah, you can kind of see where all the ruts are. It's gnarly, um, and this is, uh, this is right by our, our tee box for the disc golf.
And they didn't tell you that they were?
Well, no, they didn't really let us know that that was happening. Um, we would have probably advised against having a demolition derby. After three inches of rain, but, you know, whatever, I mean. We have, yeah.
I, I mentioned when we were talking about doing the shared use agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, with Tabor and the school, maybe doing one with the fair board too. Uh, is that something that, okay.
We do, we have a, a twenty-five-year lease with them, uh, for the use of the property. Uh, there, it's pretty loosely written, um, and it gives them quite a bit of leeway. Gives everybody quite a bit of leeway. It was really just kind of put in place. They're supposed to pay us a dollar a year, uh, for the right to use the facilities. And then it kind of outlines more or less what the capital requirements are if they were to make adjustments to the buildings and things like that, so. Or the facilities, but it doesn't really outline some of those other things that, I think you're right, probably do need to have. A, a discussion at the very least.
Yeah.
About kind of how to handle that.
And, you know, and I know that, you know, they're swamped with other things, and, you know, the, this is, it, it is volunteer.
There are volunteer.
Yeah, so, you know, I can understand that, um, that this isn't necessarily their primary role. But I think some communication needs to definitely be improved, though.
Yeah, that's a, that is a sore spot. Um, we try, we've tried to do it, and they can't. They have had a hard time even getting their board to meet because they don't have enough people. Yeah, it's, it's just a, a little bit of an awkward situation to try to navigate with them, um. So I'm, I'm gonna recommend that we bill them for the cost of the repairs, whatever we have to do, and then look at the shared use.
That's a good idea.
Cause it's a pretty significant amount of damage, and that didn't even, I didn't even take pictures of what's inside the arena, which is total mess.
But that is a mess.
Oh, my goodness, yeah, I mean, and it's like, okay, well, if we're gonna, we're not, you know, David's kind of pivoting on the dog park location. Thinking about going back to his original plan of being outside of that arena, um, so we're still kind of navigating what to do. Uh, to be really honest with you, so.
I would, uh, yeah, I, I'm with you. I think we ought to bill them for the damages.
Hmm.
And then maybe we need to look at moving that dog park somewhere else.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, the dog park, if it moves to its original location, would be right outside that fence, and then we would in turn fence that area in. And that would eliminate their ability to park.
Correct. Where those ruts are.
Where those, exactly where those ruts are, yeah.
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 Uh, yeah, I wish there was a better solution here. I don't know what it's gonna end up looking like at the end of the day, but we're gonna keep working at it. Uh, moving on from that, baseball field donations, we've got a pretty substantial donation through the Hillsborough Community Foundation to support improvements to. Uh, Legion Field, which is the middle field, if you're out at the sports complex. The high school plays on the north field, uh, Tabor's got the south field. And the middle field is Legion Field. Um, so the goal, I think, is to have the high school move their games out there. There's a lot of advantages to that happening, um, because they get all the infrastructure of the sports complex. In addition to what they normally have, which, uh, another issue is the bathrooms over at the fairgrounds. We've had to share the building, and there's been some friction with that. Uh, but if they were able to play out at, at the complex, then we'd be able to, um, you know, they could use the concession stand. They could use, all that stuff kind of gets wrapped up, uh, and then we don't have as much issue with, with Memorial Field, so. Uh, got a pretty big donation to do that, and they're talking about, you know, expanding the infield. You'd have to move the infield a little bit further out. Upgrading lighting potentially, uh, there's this, may have to move the fence a little bit, or go higher on the fence. Uh, to get the right distances, uh, be a pretty short, pretty short to center field way it is right now. But you can build a higher fence and get more, more distance that way.
What would we do with Memorial?
Good question. I don't know yet. It would still be, we'd still use it for summer stuff, I think, um.
Is there a rec department upkeep there?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the rec does all that.
Oh, they currently do that, so it's not anything new for them?
It wouldn't be anything new.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
As, uh, have we heard from USD four-ten?
Yeah, they're actually pretty excited about that idea. They like the idea of being out at the complex because they've got their softball, and then they even have their baseball.
Which usually they're playing the same teams at the same.
Yeah, that makes. Works out real well, actually.
The way it usually has worked.
So, I think everybody's pretty, pretty jazzed about this idea, um, it would work out pretty well, I believe, so. Uh, they're kind of moving forward with that and just trying to generate some of that and, uh, see what that is. Money's not the issue. They got the money, so. Uh, they're just kind of working through the technical pieces, so. Um, upcoming out of town day, it's just reminding you, I'll be out, uh, starting, uh, late tomorrow afternoon for surgery. I'll be out probably for at least a couple days, and I'll come back that following week, and then our offices will be closed on November eleventh, which is next Tuesday for Veterans Day, so. That is everything I think I have today. Oh, and we also have financials. Your financial reports are in there too for you, um. So we've got the quarterly statement there that gets published in the newspaper, uh, for September, all through the quarter that ended in September. Uh, and then you have all the, the reports that ended the month of September, so, uh, working our way through October, and we'll have that for you. Next meeting, maybe? I don't know. Yeah, that's the plan. It's gonna be a busy next meeting. I hope you get your finance hats on.
Questions? Okay, hearing none, we will now, uh, open it up to our final opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone online or in the room that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll close our final opportunity for public comment and go to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Wilkins.
Um, you know, would just like to tell them, I think the polls are still open, right? Yeah, today is, uh. It is election day for, uh, certain members of the council. I know Mayor Lou and I and school board.
And Blake.
We don't talk about Blake. He's gonna resign anyways. Uh, but yeah, no, if you have the time, get out and vote, you know, support your local city government.
Any suggestions?
No.
House is the common one.
No. No. You know what they say when you're digging yourself a hole?
Yeah.
Stop digging.
Stop digging, yeah.
Yeah. Councilman McCarty.
Nothing.
Councilman By.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Well, as it turns out, the mayor does have something to talk about, and I want to do a little trash talking. So the mayor is gonna do some trash talking today. I will tell you, this trash talking started out last week when I received a phone call from one of our county commissioners. Councilman, Commissioner Garing, and, uh, if you, any of you read in this, the story on the, uh, commission's meeting last week. They were talking about the transfer station. They were talking about recycling, and they were talking about rates. And whether they wanted to continue certain operations, and the council, or Commissioner Garing. Was asked to speak to the city of Hillsborough on these ish, on these matters, so Matt was gone last week. So this morning at seven o'clock, we met in my office, uh, Commissioner Garing, Matt Styles, and myself. And we talked trash, and, uh, and recycling, I should say. It wasn't just trash.
Just recycling.
But at this point, uh, currently today, the city pays, uh, for recycling. The city pays a tipping fee of eighty-two dollars a thousand, or a ton.
A ton, yeah.
Excuse me, eighty-two dollars a ton, and the county pays twenty-eight.
Yeah, that'd be the difference.
It'd be the difference.
Of one ten.
Because the costs at the transfer station for recycling are a hundred and ten dollars a ton. There are several commissioners that would like to do away with that arrangement and charge Hillsborough. The full amount and not participate in the recycling program. And that will have consequences. For the city of Hillsborough, but potentially for the county of Marion. And, uh, what it amounts to today is trash. We are all assessed, every residential, uh, property is assessed one hundred and twenty-five dollars for trash. Every commercial property is assessed by the county on your county tax statement, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. For trash for commercial properties, so that covers trash. Then with our collection of trash and our hauling it to the transfer station. We pay the county of Marion zero dollars to tip our trash at the transfer station. Because that cost is covered by our assessment, our trash assessment. Is that clear? Everybody got that? So. Currently, if the current, the current, uh, situation on recycling then. Is the city, uh, averages twenty tons per month of recycling. Two, that's two hundred and forty tons per year. The city pays, we pay nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars is our share, and the county pays. Six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Going to the new, uh, estimated, uh, that same twenty tons a month, uh, um. If the city eliminated our rec, if we eliminated our recycling and turned it all to trash. That would increase the amount of tons by twenty tons a month. The city would pay zero dollars for that, and it would cost the county eighty-four hundred dollars is what it would cost the county. So it's a net loser for the county if we should end our recycling program and put it all in the trash. That make sense? Well, apparently, it doesn't make sense to the county commission. That math apparently is too hard for them to, uh, to come up with, so what I've done has had Cali. Create a nice little sheet that explains that math, hopefully in ways that, uh, that are understandable. If you get one of these to Jane, please.
Yeah.
Mr. Styles. So. Currently, if, if we keep things exactly as they are, the county would save sixteen hundred and eighty dollars. Should we continue, uh, recycling as opposed to putting it in the trash? Does that make sense? Just so we, so we let you know, the, uh, the increase that the county's proposing on our recycling is thirty-five percent. They're voting to increase our costs thirty-five percent. If we were to have to, uh, increase our, actually thirty-four percent, I'm sorry, thirty-four. If we were to in, currently, a residential customer pays five dollars for recycling. That would increase to six dollars and seventy cents a month if we continued to recycle, paying the higher tipping fee. Commercially, it would go from six dollars to eight dollars and four cents. And then, of course, the, uh, commercial has larger containers, and you can see the, the impact there. And you may wonder, how many of our residents are doing recycling? About two-thirds of our residents are recycling. And a third are not. In addition to those two-thirds of Hillsborough residents that are currently recycling, we get a lot of people from the county. That bring recycling to our recycling center by the old water tower, and that includes a lot of people from the Gosse area. A lot of people from north of town bring recycling to Hillsborough, and so should we eliminate recycling? That would, uh, that would in fact, uh, eliminate their ability to recycle as well.
Wow.
So. You can see why I'm calling this talking trash, because, uh, you know, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. Why the county would want us to pay an increased fee that might disincent us to recycle. Which the net result of that would cost the county more.
What's the reasoning for it?
I think there are some commissioners that don't like recycling and have, there was a comment in the paper that. Well, it just gets taken to the trash anyway. There are, uh, others that, uh, you know, I, I think, because we are the only metropolitan area. That is currently recycling as part of our city utility. Marion divested themselves of their city recycling. And they currently use Nysley Brothers, and if you're a resident of Marion, you can. Contract with Nysley to take, take your recycling, but that's at an additional cost. So what this would do is this would, uh, um, this would in turn. Put more pressure on those in Marion and those outside of Hillsborough that desire recycling. It would make it a lot harder for them, in addition to the two-thirds of Hillsborough residents that recycle to do that. There's also, uh, another factor that's, uh, playing on the minds of the, uh, of the commission, and that's the current tipping fee. For Butler County, which is where our trash goes, correct?
Yep.
That's thirty-five dollars a ton currently, and it's reported to, it has been reported to us. That that tipping fee may increase to sixty dollars a ton, which would then just exacerbate. You know, adding recycling, that would just make it worse, not make it better. So, you know, it's my intent to, uh, take this document, share it with our county commissioners. With a letter, uh, well, before I say that, that would be my intent, but what I'm gonna do instead. Is I'm gonna ask the council for your input, and I want to give you the opportunity. To talk to your constituents and see how you feel this would be received for us to, uh. Either number one, increase by thirty-four percent the cost to recycle, or number two, to eliminate recycling. Altogether. Cause that's really our choices at the point. Is there a third option that I'm missing?
Not, not especially now. I mean, that's a, it's a good snapshot, yeah.
So, you know. Some people would say common sense is an oxymoron, um, you know, I'll let you make your own conclusions about that.
I'll agree with you in this particular case.
Yeah.
Uh, don't make sense to me.
Don't make any sense.
Right.
Well, the math, according to, uh, what I'm seeing here, doesn't seem to add up. And so, you know, di- again, disincenting us to do the right thing. I mean, if you think about it. This is just the dollars and cents part. This is not the good steward part.
Yep.
And recycling is being, in my opinion, being a good steward of the resources that God's entrusted to us. And trusted us with, and, uh, so I for one strongly am against. And, uh, so I for one strongly am against stopping or against ending our recycling program. However, you know, this is a matter that I think we should let people weigh in on.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody in my block, I mean, uh, recycles everybody.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's same for a lot of people. Surprised it's not higher percentage than that. It seems like most people.
Yeah, that was our estimate. So, I asked David specifically, like, what is that? I mean, as a mount, like, would you say, he's like, well, it's six, six or seven and ten people are, are pretty active in that. So I don't know if that's how accurate that is or, you know, that's just an estimate.
Yeah.
Everybody's got a cart or everybody can choose to have a cart. Um.
I only put mine out like once a month.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might not even take into account because we do about the same thing.
I just don't have enough stuff to recycle because of just me.
Well, so I would tell you that, uh, our family of three, our recycling is generally as much or more than our trash.
Ours is too. I mean, we have a lot of, we, I recycle everything we can.
My wife is very dedicated and she is absolutely the recycling police at our house. And, uh, God help you if you throw something, uh, in the trash that belongs in the recycling.
I always felt you can't keep putting stuff in the ground forever because some time happens. So, you can, you know.
Now, I am not going to say, I think it would be naive as well to say that recycling, the value of recycling is what it has been in the past. That has changed, but we have, on the commercial side, we have a ton of cardboard that gets recycled from our businesses and commercial customers. And that is one of the things that is still very financially, uh, positive on the recycling side. It's harder on the, on the, uh, on the plastics. They're, it's a little bit harder, but.
Maybe we put our aluminum cans in, uh, like, uh, working in DC, we give them all of that.
Oh, the Honor Flight.
Honor flights.
So.
Honor flights.
I'm going to stop trash talking now unless you guys want to keep trash talking.
I don't get it. But I'm glad you brought that up.
Well, I mean, there's, uh, I'm not going to lie. I mean, you know, I felt like this needed a little dramatic emphasis and, uh, you know, I appreciate you, uh, playing along with me as, uh, as I hopefully provide that. So.
Yeah, I do have questions. The people we talked to, do you want them to talk to the county or do you want us just to relate to you what they have to say?
Well, I think it's both. It's both. I mean, they're residents of this county. And, uh, you know, we are by far and away the biggest recycling customer of the, uh, transfer station. And by the way, the, the county has been in conversation about the possibility of somehow coming up with some arrangement to, uh, to have someone operate the transfer station on their behalf instead of them directly operating it. So that yet to be determined what, what that means or what that even might look like. But I will say, and we've had this conversation, this is not, shouldn't be anything new to anybody, even anybody sitting around this table. But the minute that we walk away from our trash utility, from our, from our, uh, trash and recycling business, we're never going to hear the end of it. That is going to be one of the worst decisions that we'll have ever made, in my opinion, in terms of the impact on the public and how many phone calls, if you want to get a lot of phone calls from upset people, I think that's one quick way to do it, is to mess around with trash and have trash blown around and not picked up or accommodating somebody that doesn't get their trash out on time and, and all the extra, extra things that we as a city do for, because we serve the people. As a city of business, we serve the people and that's what it's all about. So, you know, again, I think I don't want to be, I don't want to be part, I don't want that to be part of my legacy to, uh, to have, uh, given up on, uh, on our, on our trash and recycling. Anything else that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.